I'm going to call the meeting to order. Our president is not, our chairperson is not here. We're going to nominate a vice chair at this point. Any nominations?
Nominate. You have a speech.
I second that.
It's been first and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Alright, the next part of the agenda is, um, I don't like the way this is falling back. We don't have any alternates or anything like that. Only, only all of you.
So I'd be a voting member because Denny's not here, right?
Right. You're actually going to be a voting member, yes.
Okay.
We, we have to vote on that. No. The minutes of, um, July 12th, 21, 2021.
May I move to approve the minutes of July 12th ZVA meeting?
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve the minutes. All those in favor? All those opposed? Now we're moving on to where we're here. Miss, but it's the, you gotta forgive me, I don't, I'm very good at this position. We're actually moving on to Mr. Carlson's.
Coulson.
Coulson, excuse me. His, um, variance application and approval. Mr. Carlson?
Coulson.
Chief Director of the Town Board of Appeals, please order. Is this a public hearing?
Um, now we've gone into it, yes.
It's not a public hearing, no.
No, not a-
This is a zoning board of appeals hearing. This is to hear Mr. Coulson's administrative appeal. Well, according to the town ordinance, six, uh, six, uh, two B hearing before any action on any appeal by the Board of Appeals, uh, must have a public hearing.
It is a public hearing.
It is a public-
They start with a public hearing and then they'll go into, if they decide to, it is a public hearing.
Then this public hearing wasn't properly advertised.
Yes, it was.
It's not on the website. It's not on the town website, which, according to the rules, state that ten days in advance, it must be on the town's website and in a newspaper.
I'll look at the file. It's been properly advertised. Let me show you.
That's part of the reason why we couldn't have a meeting for thirty days is because of all the advertisements had we done. So-
I didn't scan the webpage.
I don't go to the webpage.
I have screenshots of the public hearing, Madam Chairman. I have the meetings here. It doesn't say the city. It just says zoning and appeals meeting. It doesn't say a public hearing. How's the public going to know that they got a town that it's not a public hearing? And it's not on, it's not on the homepage either of the town website.
If that ends up being the case, then it will be an early night.
Well, I mean, we've had some, we've had some dealings with the, uh, not following procedure.
Oh, I understand totally. I know what you're coming from. I know, I, I understand totally.
I know the position you're in.
Oh, yeah. It's not, I'll trade.
So it is listed on the town's website as a zoning board of appeals meeting at five o'clock. The newspaper article is here that ran in the whatever reporter. There's a copy of the ad here if anybody would like to see it. Town of Acton zoning board of appeals, public notice in accordance with section 662 of the Town of Acton zoning ordinance, you are hereby notified. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 2nd at five o'clock, et cetera. We also have all of the certified letters that went out to all of the abutters.
I understand that. I'm saying it's not properly advertised on the town website. It's not.
Cause it's listed on-
It's just listed on the town website as zoning board of appeals, five o'clock. It doesn't say public hearing. Now, other ones say public hearing. They tell you the lot and everything else. It, it doesn't say it's a public hearing. It's not properly done.
How would you guys like to approach this?
I'm clueless. I'm sorry.
The town policy says that it has to be advertised ten days in advance, which it was. And it was ran in the newspaper as a public hearing. The abutters have been notified.
Right. The problem we have is the wording, I guess, that was on your website.
So where in the zoning ordinance does it show on the town's website? It has to be listed a certain way. It doesn't. It's advertised on the town's website that there's a meeting that will be held ten days prior. It's listed in a newspaper. All the abutters have been notified. The Board of Selectmen have a policy, and you want to, you can review that if you'd like, that says, talks about meetings. Meeting workshop policy. All meetings and workshops called by any town board, committee, or department must abide by the following guidelines. Chairman of department who confirms space with the town administrator. Chairman of department head notifies the town administrator in writing a minimum of ten days. Town administrator posts notice to the town's website cable hallway. Town administrator notifies APAD director who schedules filming. APAD director assigns meetings or workshops to cable person. APAD director or their designee uploads videos three days prior. In the case of any inappropriate contact, camera person will notify APAD director, who will notify the town administrator, only the Board of Selectmen have the authority to instruct edits as possible. Policy does not apply to weekly staff meetings held between the Board of Selectmen. Exempt from this policy are only postons governed by the Town of Acton's zoning ordinance.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There is a difference between the word meeting and the word public hearing. A public hearing is where everybody can speak. And according to the main law, it says residents, non-residents, taxpayers, and taxpayers must be allowed to speak.
Okay, my question is, is when we have a town hall meeting, we don't list it as a public hearing, it's a meeting?
No, when you have a public hearing, people come here, everybody can speak.
But town halls, the hall, town hall's the same way. Everybody can speak there.
Regular, regular meeting like this meeting, if you don't, uh, recognize anybody to speak, they don't have a right to speak. It's like the selectmen's meeting. It's just a meeting where the chair is in control.
Well, this is-
At a public hearing, you have to allow the people to speak. There's a difference.
Has anybody said, has anybody said that public would not be allowed to speak?
No.
I give you point.
Yes, I do too.
But has anybody said anything?
It's not, it's not been advertised as a public hearing. Now, we can get into semantics and-
We're not going to get into semantics and stuff like that. At this point, we're going to let Mr. Carlson.
Coulson.
Coulson speak on his behalf and what we got. And we're going to go from there. We're also going to listen to some of the abutters, as long as it pertains to this, to this paper. If it doesn't, it's not happening. And we're also going to listen to our C, our CEO. Yes. So that's where the line lines right now.
Okay, just opened you up. We'll do it again.
I, I know that and-
How's that?
And ten to one with-
We've got cases at Superior Court.
And ten to one where there's only half the board here. We've still got another half of the board to hear this.
Madam Chair, your public hearing notice and your abutter notices are sent out.
Yes.
They've all been reviewed by the attorney and we met the guidelines. And it is a public hearing, so I trust she's going to let everybody speak.
And yes, that's what, we're going to follow what we have on the agenda. And when we get down, after we hear the last person that we've talked about, that will be when people probably be abutters that are here that want to talk, as long as it pertains to this article, we'll be fine. If it goes beyond that, if you talk about daisies and their colors, we're going to stop you. It's going to pertain to what this is. Okay?
Madam Chair, if you people making the decision, not me, but I mean, it's only cost a hundred and seventy-five dollars to get a Superior Court hearing.
I understand. And I understand what you're saying. And maybe that's something that the selectmen will change their wording, or maybe our administrator might have to tweak curves eventually down the road. I don't know. I don't write policy.
I have a question. I, I, the only handout I have of the printout, there's no plot plan of proposed building site. And that's one of the intentions that I want to bring up, and it's not available to you.
Can you introduce yourself first?
Yeah, my name's Tony Candoli and I live in ninety-seven Stewart Drive, which is Ryanick's.
And you were an abutter, right?
Yes.
You will have your time to talk.
I'm just saying-
I understand totally. Okay. We will hear from the, we will hear from the applicant at this point. He or she is going to have to come up here to this mic, unfortunately.
Feel, feel free to sit in that chair if you'd like, sir.
Yep, you can sit. Any of the chair you choose, or?
When, when you get a building lot, when you're allowed to start building, soon as you get the permit?
To my knowledge.
So you can put the foundation in, throw the roof and sides up, and when it gets inspected is whenever?
To my knowledge.
Now, what about building in wetlands?
Mr. CEO?
The DEP permits have been approved and are in place.
Then why do we have to bring in thirty-five truckloads of bank gravel? To keep the trucks from sinking when they were putting the well in?
The only thing I'm going to comment on that is the DEP permit has been applied for, approved, and is in place, is effective.
Are they going to remove the bank gravel down to the silt? Silt lining that they said they were gonna-
They're going to build it as designed on the plan.
So they're not going to take it down to the?
They're going to build it as designed on the plan.
Alright, but are they going to take that gravel, out the bank gravel down to the silt fence where it said that it was going to be in original?
We're not going to keep beating up the same process. Keep, move on.
Until I get an answer.
He just told you they're going to build what the permit tells you to build to. Please move on.
I'll give you a couple more questions, I guess. Now, you got plans to go across the street to my property?
No, no activity will be on your property. All the proposed, confirmed activity is on Mr. Farley's property.
What about in the street? Is, is encroaching onto the street? On your plans, it's encroaching to the street?
I've got a survey that shows where the proposed activity is for the septic and, uh-
It's not going to encroach into the street, any?
It's not going to be in the street.
How many car parking spots does he have?
It would appear like two.
And it's going to be a two-bedroom, possibly four? It says two, but?
Two-bedroom then.
Yeah.
Whatever it says, it is.
But he can add, he can swat, swap the room around and make it into a four, no problem.
He hasn't applied for that.
But he can do it. And the septic is only for a two-bedroom? I'm just trying to find out what the rules are. I want to-
He's given you what he has. Please move on.
I had approved septic design, designed by a, um, site evaluator that was permitted to service the building, the proposed, uh, structure that's been permitted.
And it's going to be twenty-five from the edge of the street?
It will meet all appropriate setbacks.
And how long is this driveway?
I don't have a driveway on the plan, on the block plan, but, but is going in for a disposal field. There's a couple of, um, chambers which you can park on top of. So I would imagine you'd park right on top of this disposal field.
Now, what about the right-of-way for me to go down to the water? That disappearing?
All of the permitted. Application is on his property. If you're referring to the CMP bolt, the CMP has an easement over that right-of-way to service and extend service to new structures or improve and maintain that.
Yep. So little poles staying where they are or they moving?
That's up to CMP.
I was going to say, that's the CMP decision.
Alright, now what about the right-of-way? The ten-foot? That seems to be a discrepancy in everybody's paperwork for that.
The right-of-way is not on Mr. Farley's property.
So you acknowledge it's the ten-foot right-of-way?
Is it mapped?
Yeah.
I have a survey that shows the right-of-way going around the other side of the garage. So it's not on Mr. Farley's property.
Thank you.
It goes, the garage, the right-of-way, Farley's. Right?
I have a, I have a survey that shows the right-of-way, and it's not on Mr. Farley's property. All permitted. The permit is-
I'm just making sure that we all know that there's a ten-foot right-of-way there.
Can you please move on? We've got the right-of-way. We know that it's been surveyed and we've told you what's happening at this point. Do you have something else?
Maybe I'm not understanding. There is a ten-foot right-of-way, right?
They already said it's on the map. It's been surveyed.
Is what? A ten?
As not being on Mr. Farley's property.
Exactly. So it doesn't pertain to him.
Some people are saying that that garage is ten feet in.
It doesn't pertain to his property or his interests.
Is the garage being built by Mr. Farley?
Nope.
Whose garage is it?
Um, one of the neighbors. And I'm just trying to see if anyone's encroaching on anyone's property.
Doesn't appear. From, from what the CEO has stated, it doesn't appear that, uh, Mr. Farley is encroaching on anybody's property per se, as far as the ten-foot right-of-way goes. Is the right-of-way on this side of the garage?
It's next to Farley's property, goes down to the water.
The right-of-way is on?
Yeah.
Mr. Farley's side of the property?
Yeah.
Okay. And the right-of-way is across the street?
No, it's on the same side.
It's on the same side, but it's not part of Mr. Farley's property?
No.
Is it your intention that Mr. Farley is taking the right-of-way?
Yep.
What do you base that on? Has, has there been a survey done in that area?
Yep. And it changed from year to year to year to year.
It can't change.
No.
Alright, well, it did.
Will those be answered?
And they said they're not coming across the street?
No.
Can I ask how long you guys have been doing this?
I, well-
I've been on the ZVA for four years.
Yeah. We've been, I've, I've been about four years, but I've been in town forever.
Um, this is like my third or fourth meeting, but I've been in town for over thirty years.
It's about my third meeting, but I was on the planning board for fifteen years before that.
Okay. How long you been? How long you been on the board?
Been in town?
Yeah, on the board.
You connected?
Yeah, on, yeah, and on the board or whatever.
You must know how long you've been on the board.
What's, now how long you been?
I'm not on the board.
He's not on the board. He, he's our-
And there's what, three or four missing tonight?
Excuse me?
How many?
We have missing three.
So we'll have another meeting later on?
Not necessarily. It all depends how this one goes tonight. There's enough of us here to make a decision.
I don't anticipate, from my personal perspective, I don't anticipate on making a decision on this issue this evening. I need more information.
And I, and Roland is actually correct because that's what I was pertaining to is that I needed more information. That's why, but if this meeting, if you get all your answers tonight and you're happy with all your answers, it might not make it to another meeting. I'm not sure until this is totally-
I got a thousand other questions coming.
Oh, no, you don't.
Do you have a plot plan or something?
A thousand other questions coming.
So that we can have a better understanding of what's going on?
I was trying to find it on the website. I can't find the map.
Because we don't have any really-
We don't have any of the mapping that you guys-
Visual of what you're-
So, I mean, for history, I'm sorry. So normally it's up to the applicant to provide a package of what you guys-
Right. And to be honest, all we got is three pieces of paper.
We gave you the building permit and his application. That's all we have.
And that's it. And the building permit is totally empty. I don't even have a building permit.
So the verdict is on the applicant, that's why this campaign should be denied.
Okay, thank you. I have that.
Oh, I do have that. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that's what it was. Okay. I mean, if you would like to take a minute and see what he has for serving, well, I'll, I'll allow that. It's right there in front of him. He can show you what he has for serving.
This is, just do it right here.
Okay.
This is the garage in question. There's a ten-foot right-of-way in here.
Do, could you, do you have copies that you could make so that everybody could have a copy?
I was going to say, that doesn't, that doesn't help us at this point.
Otherwise, you're going to have eight individual.
Thank you, Jennifer.
While she's making copies, is there any other questions that you, you have, or is even the board has?
It's hard to follow without the visual of-
It's hard to follow on what we have.
Well, I get all these questions if you want.
We have the same.
We have questions, but we don't have the need-
I'm dyslexic. I have trouble reading and writing, so we can cancel it right here and I'll get a lawyer.
I mean, I'm really dyslexic.
I'll just get a lawyer. And this is-
You guys need to keep some of the noise out front down because it's catching on.
Ten-foot right-of-way right there.
Okay. So that might be another thing that would be helpful for everyone to have a copy.
She's, she went and got a couple of copies. I don't know what else they need for copies. He was, all this was supposed to be supplied to us, but then the application came in and all we got was just the application. But we can only go by what we have.
So what was your main reason for applying for this, for, for this appeal? What, what's your main reason for applying?
To help save the lake. Cause it was two, um, looms. One was starting to nest there.
Okay.
And then a picnic table ended up there. Then like a month and a half, two months later, another one showed up and another-
And this is showing up on his property or on the right-of-way? On his property?
Well, one could be close to the right-of-way, but I think both on his.
So on Far, Farley's property?
But I don't care about the birds. No one cares about them, right?
That's not true.
No, that's not true.
Well, Jennifer's gone and made copies. Is there anything else that you want to add to this, or?
Yeah, I got a, like I said, I got a whole bunch of questions, but I have trouble reading and writing. But if I could get someone out of the audience to read it for me, like the questions that you got there, someone, one of you guys?
Why don't you, why don't you see if somebody out there would like to help you with your issue? That you know or that you can rely on?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jennifer.
Would you, would you sit beside him and help him? Thank you, Jen.
These questions, I don't know if they're appropriate. Jennifer can say if they're quite along. Say, you read it first.
Just for clarity, I did not take those notes.
Jennifer, Jennifer can't do it because she-
Well, I'm just, now that he's grown up, I think it's okay with you, just a point of clarity. So, Mr. Coulson did come into the office to fill out, fill out the application. Um, he sat with an assistant who took notes on his behalf. It was not me.
Hey ma'am, can I ask your name?
Oh, Lee, Lee Anne Richard.
Do you, are you friends, or?
Yes.
Okay. Are you, alright.
I live across the street.
Okay. This, when, when he's done. This young lady is actually going to help him with his words in, in explaining what's going on, only because he's having some issues. We want to make it fair as we can and as honest as we can, but we also can't keep repeating the same questions, okay? In other words, you get your answer and we need to, we need to move on.
To all of them, basically.
Okay, coming across the street, you already talked about.
Yeah.
Coming across the street, aren't you dying on his property?
Because we want to be as fair as we can.
Yeah, on your right-of-way.
Well, they just did.
Yeah.
Um, I'm assuming it's this right here, proposed building area?
Okay.
I guess that one's alright. Oh, alright, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I don't know, I'll get to ask it.
Okay, so nineteen?
Nineteen thirty-three. So this is Far, Farley right here.
Okay, forget his name?
Mike Demers.
Mike? Um, maybe you could answer this question? Shh. Two of my friends owned that property in the past and they weren't allowed to build because it was wetland.
I haven't seen any application. I couldn't make any judgment on that.
Now, what if I bring them in and bring?
Here's it.
And a lot of it will depend upon the outcome of this one.
Well, there should be something in the files on-
There was no, uh, application for a camper or anything like that in the file that I saw.
Moving on, can she, can you help him?
Was that upon Uncle Dave?
Yeah.
No one has contacted.
Ice cream truck.
I didn't know until one week ago. Someone has not been contacted. Scott?
Yeah, there's another person that's not here. I don't think he was Scott that lives next door to that. The water's encroaching onto his property already.
It's just curious at this point.
Yeah. And, so how would I go about doing something like that?
They should have been here with you to do-
Yeah, there was no way to contact them. There was no numbers to contact them. Even you guys don't have a contact with it.
No, you, you, this is like, all this information we should have gotten when you gave us the package.
The neighbor was notified.
Okay. There's that, then he or she decided not to show, so.
Yeah, what about, what about the drainage pipe to, on someone else's property? The drainage pipe? And it didn't have the right underlayment put under there? It didn't have any sheeting, uh, anything like that put in? I was right there when they did it.
Talking about the, the water that goes under the road, onto Mr. Farley's property?
And goes into that twenty-four inch pipe?
Goes into a culvert and then to the riprap?
Yeah.
Yep. We, uh, the CEO and I have been out on, after a rainy day and it is performing as designed.
On someone else?
All on Mr. Farley's property.
And if it's found not to be on their property, on his property?
I would like to see that proof.
Now, what about when it was put in, the guidelines weren't followed for the underlayment on that?
Uh, alls I can say is it's functioning today as designed.
Yeah, but it's set up to fail? It has to be put in properly to work.
And he just told you it's functioning now?
Until it is-
So he can cut all the side?
He didn't cut all the side work. He did his, he did his job.
No, he didn't. He didn't put it in right. That's only my opinion. We can go later on with his lawyer about it. That's only my opinion. We can go later on with his lawyer about it. Yeah, it's not, it's not being brought down to the silt, to the silt.
Put some basin in place, and it doesn't. Basin, basin, basin?
I forget. But that's another thing. How come it's, the soil's not gonna be brought down to the level, to the silt, silt fence? It's three feet higher, and the water goes to everybody.
The system that was built is...
It's not a system.
It's a system of a culvert and riprap.
No, it's not, has nothing to do with that.
Excuse me, can you guys quiet down over there a little bit? It's hard for us to hear him, especially with the mask.
It's on the other side of the lot. It's not even anywhere near that. They put it down when they take all the, um, when they put the road down to put the well in, so the trucks wouldn't get stuck. Then they put the gravel, then they put stone and more gravel. And it's roughly two and a half.
It's a construction site right now. The grades will change until the project is brought to completion.
Yeah, but once they put the foundation, they won't be able to get through there with a tractor to do that.
Once they complete the foundation and the structure, the final grade will be brought to what is applied for.
Yeah, and he's smiling about that.
No.
Just my, just my thoughts.
You know, we're not gonna get into personalities.
We're not.
We're just gonna go with what you have.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Coulson, which lot are you on this map? So Mr. Farley is nineteen, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm across the street.
So you're across on the other side of Stewart Drive?
Yeah.
Okay.
What does it say? Was coming on Mr. Coulson's side of property? In part of...
Diane's.
The closing includes his property.
So do I have a guarantee that you're not coming on my side of the street?
There's never a guarantee. It's up to the CEOs to work out what they have to do to make it correct and right. Am I not right?
We've, we've gone over this already, Mr. Coulson, where that was your first initial complaint to me, was that they were encroaching on your property. And I assured you at that point, and I assure you today, no one's going to be doing anything on your property.
And if there ever is an issue, there's ways to go about taking care of it.
Oh, yeah, there is. There is definitely.
So right now, everything's fine. Everything's going the way it's supposed to go.
But the pipe is still there, like...
The CEOs have worked together to make sure that this does what it's supposed to do correctly. Is there any more questions?
Now, what is a shoreline zone versus wetlands?
Shoreland zone is two hundred and fifty feet strip between a great pond or river, upland to the upland edge. This property is entirely in the shoreline zone.
Yeah, because it goes all the way up to my house, right? So... If you put a bigger pipe, that means more water flow, right?
No.
Why do they want to do a twenty-four-inch pipe instead of leaving it six?
That's what the engineer called for. They need to plan on a hundred-year storm.
Yeah, and we've already had five of those, and it's already flooded out over there. Actually, we've had, how many this year?
I don't know, but can you move, can you please ask questions? We're getting answers.
I mean, that's just the wetlands.
Yeah, they filled that up, so there's no wetlands anymore.
Is there any more on your application that you want to ask us about?
Nope. I think so.
Anybody have questions at this point on the board? You'll...
Well, I guess at this point, I'm wondering, Mr. Coulson, kind of going back to your question before, at this point, what is your biggest issue with this?
They're polluting the lake.
Application, and what is it that you're actually appealing specifically?
They're polluting the lake.
But they're, where is the, the specific evidence that they're polluting the lake?
If you go down there and look.
We need that, we need that here in front of us.
We need, we need pictures. We need the application.
He's got some photos he took. There's multiple people that have photos, but I don't know if they have them today.
We don't have them.
So we'll be having another meeting, so we can produce that.
Not, I'm, we're not sure. It all depends how tonight's ends. I mean, we gotta go one step at a time. We want to make sure that you're satisfied with all your answers. I know you're not gonna be totally, and neither is anybody else, but we want to make sure we've given you a fair amount of time to explain your application.
We put the foundation in tomorrow, the next day, so...
If they have proof.
Basically, sir, you would like them to stop work. That's basically what you would like them to do.
Yeah, because they're polluting the lake. But nobody cares about that either, so...
I don't, I don't see where your, uh, appeal...
I walked on and looked, so I...
No, hang on.
I don't see where your appeal, sir, is about polluting the lake. It doesn't say that on your appeal at all. This is an administrative appeal pertaining to a building permit issued to...
Mr. Farley.
Mr. Farley.
I don't think you mentioned anywhere in here that you were worried about the pollution.
And technically, whatever's not on your application, we're not supposed to discuss. It's only what's on your application. I've let you go a little bit beyond that because I want to make sure you get what you need for answers, because I really would like you to have answers.
They just put a silt fence up today.
Does, that has nothing to do with what's on your application. I'm sorry.
I had Jennifer do it, so...
Actually, for clarification, Jennifer did not fill out your application. I let you sit down with a staff member of mine who took notes on all of the concerns. I was not involved in it. He sat with a different staff member at the window. She wrote word for word your concerns, and it was submitted to you, and I told you guys that at the last hearing as well.
Exactly, and I agree. And this is, and that's what I said. We've got four, four papers, front and back.
She even initially four of those.
Yeah, with everything on it. Did you, do you want, do you have a copy of what you, what you've given us?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, the, the questions that you're reading off.
The questions on the application that you have. You have a copy, right? So we're not just...
Yeah, that's, that's what we have.
It's got front and back. It's got your butters. It's got different...
Lee, Lee, that's the paper we have.
That's the paper we got. And technically, you're only supposed to talk about what you've given us for an application.
Oh, I don't care about the pollution in the lake. I hope it...
That's the way it runs here. Sorry.
Well, see, I'm dyslexic, and no one let me know.
I am also. I'm dyslexic, and I have a hard time.
Yeah, I have a real hard time.
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Is there anything else?
I don't know.
Well, if your butters are here and they would like to speak, we will allow that to happen, but we need to know what... Is there any butters to this, to this property here?
Yeah.
You, with the stripes, you are welcome to come up here and announce who you are. I can't sleep.
He thought they were polka dots.
Polka dots!
Yeah, well, no, I wear my...
You can introduce yourself, please, and then if you, if you want, turn the mic towards you so we can all know what's going on.
Sure.
Uh, my name's Tony...
Need to stay on topic, okay? Just to give you a full warning.
Right. I have a couple of basic questions first, and then I would like to get into the specifics, okay? My name's Tony Cindoli. I live in ninety-seven Stewart Drive. I've been a property owner in Acton at that property for over thirty years. Uh, I knew the, uh, original owners of those two, the three lots that the Stewarts own, as well as the lot that Ron bought that was across the street. That lot that's being proposed to be developed has been vacant since the time I moved in. And if there were, the Great East, uh, Lake Association put a history of the development of Great East Lake. And that whole development that we're in was subdivided in the early forties, and that lot has been basically vacant since that time, if not before. My first basic question is, when a building permit is applied for, does it go to the planning board?
Not if it meets dimensional setbacks. If it's an allowed use, so in our land use chart, there's different permitting authorities. For a permit application of this nature, this is, uh, a proposed structure that can meet dimensional setbacks. A subject system can and was designed for it. The DEP permits were all applied for and approved. Again, it's an allowed use. There's no reason to deny this permit.
Considering that the property has been wet eight to nine months a year since I've been there, uh, that wasn't taken into account?
They took it into account. They designed a stormwater system to deal with the water that comes across that property.
Okay, and you, you said that the former code enforcement officer last year informed me that any water that enters that property has to stay on that property and not go to either the butters or into the lake. Is that a true statement?
That's a true statement, and the system that's in place today...
I disagree with you.
Hold on, he's answering your question.
No, no, he's gonna answer that. It's, it's working.
Hang on, hang on.
Okay.
Yes, finish your statement, please.
In place and functioning, as witnessed by myself and Code Officer Seventy as well.
Uh, I was up here the end of April, beginning of May, and noticed that the pipe had been put in. There were people working on it after the original permit had been expired. And I called up Town Hall. I called up the sheriff to, you know, well, anyway, it rained then, and the water exited the pipe, went through the bric-a-brac, through the mulch that was there, and into the lake. I took pictures of it, and I sent it to the, uh, website or the email for the code enforcement officer back in May, showing that the water was entering the lake. So you said you haven't seen evidence. There's an email from me in May showing that.
The water can and will enter the lake. The system is designed to, to slow down the flow and capture any sand and silt before it does enter the lake.
Doesn't that, doesn't that make it...
Water will go to low ground.
No, I understand. Now, gravity always wins. Uh, but doesn't, isn't that the definition of a stream? A stream is a flow of water into a larger body of water, and that, and there are certain guidelines of working on a stream.
There are, there is a definition of what constitutes a stream, and this does not fit that definition.
That's your opinion.
No, 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 we're not getting into personalities.
No, 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 I'm saying, no, but that, that's his opinion as a code enforcement officer. But I'm wondering why the state DEP was involved with the original permit that expired back in February, where they basically...
The DEP permit has not expired yet.
But I was gonna say, let him finish.
The, the permit I saw expired in February of this year.
Now you can finish your statement.
Jennifer gave me a copy of it, and it's expired February of this year, and people were working on it in April, which was a violation because there was no new permit issued at that time.
Okay, let him, let him answer those questions.
No, no, I, I wanna...
Let him answer that question.
The DEP, the DEP permit is good for two years, and that has not expired. The building permit had lapsed, correct? Had been, I was told verbally extended, but I told them I wanted to get it in writing, and that's why we did the, the new permit and extended it.
And when, when did that get approved? Because when I was up here at the end of April, beginning of May, I was told that the, all the permits were expired, and no, no work can be done.
June third, it was issued.
Okay, so, that's fine. But the original DEP permit showed the twenty-four-inch, whatever that size of the pipe is, the new pipe is now, on the, my, the adjoining property, there, going under Stewart Drive, onto the other side of the Stewart, the right-of-way Stewart Drive, where both Ron and Diane's property abut. And basically, that was the building permit, uh, this plot plan I saw that showed what was being constructed. And that was when everything, uh, got, you know, people got upset about, is that there were, the right-of-way was being torn up. And it, basically, construction was being proposed on property that the present builder, you know, landowner, did not own, and...
When, when you refer to the right-of-way, are you talking about Stewart Drive?
Stewart Drive, yes. Yes, and the original plot that I saw had the Stewart Drive listed as approximately thirty feet. Now, I'm an engineer, okay? You don't put down on drawings approximately.
That doesn't pertain to this thing whether you're an engineer or not. I, I just want the facts.
The facts, how can you approve a plot that says the right-of-way of Stewart Drive is an approximate value? It's either thirty feet, twenty feet, ten feet. It's not approximately thirty feet. And that's one of the issues I have with the original, uh, granting of the permit, was that it showed a lot that didn't exist, you know? He, nobody knew how wide Stewart Drive should be. It was originally laid out, as I said, back in the forties. And where it went, you know, it was staked out back then. Now, one of the other things is the plot that shows the proposed building lot. The boundary at my property, the lines aren't the same. There are different, there are... I, I have two surveys that were done in seventy-five and in eighty-five that show, uh, different angles. And it was last year or the year before, I forget. Next thing I know, you know, there's lot, there's plot lines going right down my property, which basically is this. So one of the things that, uh, is in question is what are the real lines for the, the boundary between my property and this?
In terms of this application, it's the completed application, this survey that outlines the meets and bounds of Stewart's property. Doesn't have to go any further than that, as long as he's not going onto your property.
You mean...
And if you can, if you...
Me Foley.
Foley, yeah.
It used to be Stewart's.
Uh, sorry, yeah. Um, you know, as long as it's not going on to other people's property.
Well, but that's the problem, is, is that the boundaries that I show on the plot that I, when I bought my plot back in eighty-five, are different than this.
Okay.
And that...
So as far as this application goes, the approval was based on the completed application and this survey?
Right, which I'm saying is incorrect. And I, you know, like I have a, a plot from a certified, uh, uh, surveyor.
If you're going all subject, I don't wanna, I don't wanna know.
Well, no, I'm, I'm going in the fact that the boundary of this is in question.
Oh, I know that, and he's told, he's told you three or four times that the survey...
Companies in that folder, they both are identical.
Yeah, but they were brand new ones.
You have one that was made in, in, I think it's two thousand eighteen, one that was done in two thousand twenty. Different companies, two different results.
And his, and you're telling him to...
But you, you, a little earlier, you said, "Things don't change." I have it from nineteen...
Things normally don't change.
Well, I have it from nineteen seventy-five and nineteen eighty-five with different values, and how does it change to two thousand and twenty?
Who did, whoever had, whoever did your estimate at that time or your surveying at that time?
Well, the...
No, no, who did this one? I, we're not, we're, we're blindsided right now.
Right, but what I'm saying is, that's the question, is what is correct? Where did these numbers come from?
The CEOs all know their jobs as well as the state of Maine, and that's where everything is coming down to.
Well, I have a, my, this plot I got was certified by an engineer, a surveyor from the state of Maine.
Well, then you need to bring it in and compare it to the rest of them, and maybe that can fix that issue that you're having. I'm, I'm not a surveyor, nor do I get involved with what they do for a job.
So, so my que, so what you're saying is, until, I, I bring in what I have as a plot and show what the difference of this boundary is, it's really, then you can decide whether, uh, this was done correctly or not.
Their property been surveyed? Is it a legal survey? If it is, bring it into the CEO's office, and they will look at that and compare whatever they have to do for information.
That's the question, is...
And they will go from there. They will have to talk to whoever did the survey, whether it was your company or their company.
Well, unfortunately, my, the company has gone out of business because I think the person died.
Then there's nothing I, nothing we can do about it. It is, you have to work on the survey that we have presently, and that's...
Well, that's what I'm saying, is I don't know where that came from.
Who did you...
You can certainly get your property surveyed.
No, I, I, I understand that, but the question is...
Time out. Where did that survey actually get done?
Line Crow.
There's your answer.
Yeah, well, and I had something done by Corner Post as well.
I did too.
And, uh, the original one was, I think it's Great East Land Survey.
Going back to what your issue is, you think his is too close to you.
I think that, my question is, where is the boundary?
This is what we're telling you. Until you get your survey done and compare the two, that's the survey we go with.
This is the controlling document.
Yes.
Tell me, your property is located across Stewart Drive?
No, I'm right next door.
Lot twenty.
Lot twenty is there, huh?
Yeah, for some reason, when they sent out the, the, the numbers, ninety-seven is before whatever this one is, ninety-five or, you know, but...
All right, your property is, is, uh, number twenty?
Yes.
I think, yeah, I guess.
Anthony and, uh...
Yeah, Teresa.
Teresa?
Yeah.
Okay. It's hard to follow when things are not labeled, you know? So your property adjoins the property that, uh... The property that Mr.-
Foley.
Foley?
Farley.
Farley, Farley, yeah.
Is currently trying to build upon.
So it's your shed and your garage that's encroaching on his property? Okay.
No.
It looks like it on here.
It looks like it according to this map. Your shed is over the line.
That's a brand-new survey. His is the old, his is existing.
This is what we have to look at.
This is what we have to look at.
Sorry, no. So he doesn't have to prove a-
This was done in 2018.
Is that your shed?
Yes, but that's been modified since then.
Well, that's what, we're, we're looking at what we have. We can look over what we have on.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just, I understand, but that's three years old.
Well-
And one of the things is, my, my main question was, why was this property not brought up in front of the planning board? Because I've been, I've been-
Hold on to that thought. Yo, you were on the planning board until how long?
15 years, but, I mean, I guess that's a question for Mike, which he answered before, that it falls within the-
It's an allowed use that meets dimensional setbacks. Planning board review is not-
But people have been putting in building permits for existing camps to have, you know, maybe expansion or moving, and it was, it would go before the planning board.
Because it doesn't meet dimensional setbacks.
Even though it didn't meet dimensional setbacks, from what I've seen on the planning board minutes, everything that anyone's doing on shoreline property goes before the planning board. And I'm really wondering why this was not brought. And I think the, if it had been, a lot of the questions that are being raised now would have gone away. And I just think from-
Does anybody know if he skipped a posi, did he skip a level? In other words, should this have gone to the planning before it came to us? Because we're the last resort.
It has not gone to planning board.
Should it have gone to planning board?
No.
No. According to your zoning ordinance, any appeals for a permit issued by a code enforcement director of the ZDA?
That's what I thought.
So it was really the code enforcement officer who decided that it didn't have to go to the planning board?
Code enforcement officer is the permitting authority, yes.
Right. And one of the questions that has been raised, not by me, but I've heard around, is that-
No, no, heard around, it doesn't pertain to this.
Yeah, well-
Yes, Roland.
Go ahead and finish, Tony, please.
That there was a conflict of interest by the code enforcement officer and the developer and the contractor. And that has been one of the contentions that I haven't brought it up, but I've heard it by various other-
We can't go by hearsay.
No, I understand that, but-
Well, the only problem, the only problem that I would have with that would be, Tony, which code enforcement officer are you talking about?
The former one, Ken Paul.
We've gone through three.
No, the, the one that was here three years ago.
Upon review of this application, I found it to be complete. A survey has been done. The septic system is designed. DEP permits are in place. It's an allowed use that meets dimensional setbacks. There's absolutely no reason to deny this permit.
So-
No reason to send it to the-
So we're all done tonight when I get it out?
If you, if you don't have anything more to pertain to his permit, his permit.
Okay, but I just wanna, I just wanna, from what the former code enforcement officer told me-
We can't go by what hearsay is. I'm sorry, we, we can't go with hearsay.
Well, okay. Can water-
You can't go, you can't use hearsay.
No, no, can water exit the drainpipe and enter Great East Lake?
Can, C-A-N, all right.
Can. Is it allowed? Will, is it allowed? Because what, what I was under, I was told that it's not allowed. The prop, the water-
He just answered that question prior to. He said it would go downstream, because everything is at the, at the base. Except for this, has a particular filter on it that stops some of the crud from going down there.
That's debatable.
Well, I can't debate it, and I'm not here to debate that particular movement.
We're just so far away, we can't go and look at it, right?
Yeah.
Right.
So, so the-
That should have been in your-
Yes, everything, everything you want, it should have been in this application.
Catch the cattle, they're smiling because I'm retiring.
No, 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 no. You can't, no personalities. I'll, I'll stop meeting.
Yeah, that's me, yeah.
I didn't say-
No personalities, stop.
Can I ask you a question? Have you reviewed the pictures I sent of the water exiting that property into the lake that I sent to the code enforcement officer?
I don't recall your, I don't recall your email, but I've seen pictures, and I've seen, obviously, the system in place personally, myself. So I don't see, I don't see any violations. The system is in place and functioning.
So if the water goes on to other property, then it's a problem?
It could potentially be an issue.
Potentially.
Could potentially be an issue. You, I, you want me to make a definite decision right here tonight?
No, no, I don't care. I, I'm not saying, you don't have to make a deci, I just wanna, going into the lake, I, calling, calling up every-
Might as well reach the lake.
Yeah, calling up every day saying, "The water's going in."
Okay, excuse me, gentlemen. This is just a repeat of what we just got done saying. We have other people that would like to speak.
Okay, I just-
And I'm going to allow her to speak.
I just wanted to verify. So going into the lake, I don't worry about that. But if it's going on to my property, or it's going to Abutter's property, then there would be a concern.
Which side of Mr. Farley's property is this 24-inch collar located on?
It's between, it's, it's closer to my property.
So it's between 19 and 20?
Yeah.
Yeah, it runs basically from behind the garage, 20 feet or-
It goes on his property.
Oh, it's actually-
From the road, from the road down to here.
All the way down there?
Yeah, all the way down to here, where it hits into a retention.
Okay.
Yeah.
Close to 75.
A retention pond or something, a retention?
Yes, it's a little, it was about a 10-foot drainage area.
Yeah, it's a bunch of rip racks on that.
Yeah, about 10, 10-foot?
To catch the heavy, heavy material from the-
Okay, so did everybody get that?
Mm-hmm. Well, I did.
You got it from the sun.
Okay, that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Abutter, please.
Thank you. I know there's one other person out there that was in a butter. You're in a butter? Come on up, ma'am, and tell us who you are, if you'd like to speak. If not-
I don't, I don't really have anything to say until my, um, survey is complete.
Okay. Anybody on the board have questions?
Which side of Mr. Farley's property are you on?
I'm on the garage side.
She owns the garage.
You own the garage.
Oh, you own the garage.
I own the 10-foot passageway.
Can we ask who you are?
I'm Diane.
So you own the, the right-of-way to the lake?
It's not to the lake, it is to Tony's property.
Oh, okay.
It ends with his garage.
So your property was owned by Mr. Curran?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Because I'm just trying to clarify things on what I'm looking at, that's all.
So there's a 10-foot right-of-way that travels over Curran's property, or formerly Curran, to Anthony's property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, and that's the right-of-way you were talking about, whether or not-
And it does not go on to Mr. Farley's property? The 10-foot right-of-way does not extend on-
No, that is on my property.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I have a question on whether the drainage that he put in, whether that is on my property, and that property was dug on and trees were taken off of. But I will not know that answer until I have my survey.
Any of the board have any questions and concerns, or anything to ask any of the CEOs?
Nothing that contains to this here. It's very interesting, though.
What about you, ma'am?
Anybody else?
So I said, well, I'm gonna get to that point. I just didn't know if you guys had any questions at this point. Now, is there anybody else there in the public meeting that pertains to this, who'd like to speak? It has to pertain to the issue at hand. Yes, you need to come up, sir, and tell us who you are and where you pertain to this.
My name is Phil Rice, I'm at 57 Stewart Drive. And I just have an overall question about the issues that we've heard tonight. With them, by what I understood and what I heard, they plan on pouring the foundation within the next day or two. Wouldn't it be hope, everybody to hold off on that until we find out what the boundaries are actually?
Are you in a butter? Excuse me, are you in a butter?
I live a couple of lots down.
Technically, we shouldn't.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
Um, at this point, we have to go by what the, what the permits have been given in the survey that is handed.
But if they pour the foundation, would, would, uh, no.
We, we cannot stop them.
There's nothing that is evidence that would be grounds for issuing a stop work order.
No, I, I understand that.
Okay, so you're not gonna be able to stop the man from pouring a foundation? Okay, you can't, you can't say, "Well, we have a, an Abutter who is having her property surveyed to determine exactly where the property line is." I would assume that Mr. Owen?
Farley.
Farley. I do the same thing.
I'm gonna get right to it. I would assume that Mr. Farley, prior to him purchasing this piece of property, would have had it surveyed. But then again, we all know, would assume spelling doesn't help.
Well, he had the survey right here.
Yes, survey right here.
I'm just saying.
Okay.
Um, I don't see any justification, you know, that the CEO would have to issue a stop work order or to pull the permit.
Okay, my last question is if these surveys that are being done on either side show that there is a discrepancy in it, and the foundation is already poured, would they have to remove it?
No.
No.
No, so it's, in other words, that the project's going on no matter what?
Well, no, I'm, what I'm gonna say, what I'm gonna say to you-
Let's, let's ask him. If it's poured, how are you gonna move it?
I lose again. Did I?
Can we let, yeah. No, if it's poured, how are you gonna move it, John?
You're not gonna move it.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, it will have to meet dimensional setbacks.
Exactly.
If, if the property lines are found to be inaccurate-
They don't have to take the foundation down.
They, they, it could happen that way. It might end up in court because you've got one, one neighbor contesting it, and the other. And whatever the judge declares would determine where that building can sit or not.
Exactly.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any more questions for either the CEO or the Abutters or owners? Anybody else out there have any questions for what we can answer pertaining to this? Yes, sir. If it pertains to this in the application, right? Can you please tell us who you are?
Yes, I'm Bernard Broder. I live at 249 East Shore Drive in Acton. I think it would have been helpful for me, as a member of the public listening, to know what exactly the issues on the application were. Listening to this, I have absolutely no idea what the applicant raised, what he didn't. And if you have that-
So do we have an extra copy, just so he can have it?
I think it's important to place that on the record, because-
Well, they go, it all goes on record.
Okay, but, but even for people listening, to know what are the issues, so that when people are told, "Well, that doesn't pertain to this," we have no idea whether it really did or it didn't.
I totally understand that.
It's just very confusing.
Well, we, what we received is very confusing. We don't, that's on the applicant to provide that information.
Well, I, I assume the applicant raised issues that were relevant for appeal, or we wouldn't be here. I would hope we wouldn't be here.
Is this, is this published, or is that?
It is, and, and just for, yeah, piece of clear-
You don't state what your issues for appeal are?
Well, they are on there, but-
Okay.
Clarity, according to the town's attorney, is that if, if, according to your zoning ordinance, anybody can appeal a permit, as long as it's within 30 days of the permit being issued. All they have to do is pay the fee, sign the form, and show up at the hearing. This is a town form that we have, where we ask them to fill out. They don't have to complete it, they have the right to present at the hearing. He did make notes on it, and that's what the board was given.
There's several notes.
So there's no statement of what the issues are? Okay.
Well, actually, there is. His statements are very broad. And I do understand that he is just listening, and, um-
No, and, and I understand-
And, now, I will gladly show you and anybody else in the audience exactly what was given to us, if you care to look.
And I, I don't need to take up everybody's time.
No, 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 and we totally understand. I'd rather be above board than below.
Yep.
On the next page. There and there, okay?
Right.
It's extremely difficult to even try to understand what was being presented to us, okay, on this appeal.
And it only came with just these three pieces of papers. It didn't come with a map, it didn't come with anything else, it didn't come with any extras. So we were just basing on whatever we have on this.
Yep.
I had no idea what this was when I got it.
And, um-
This has been the, an odd application over the-
And in an effort to be unbiased, the town is not allowed to get involved. We sat someone down, Secretary Walz allowed them to pay notes on his behalf, but the town doesn't get involved or prep documents or pull maps together and do it all, so-
Right.
And because, and because he had such issues, this is why we allowed him to go farther and have help.
I have no problem with that.
And I, and I want him to make sure he's clarified, make sure that he understands. Yes, he repeated himself several times, but I wanted to make sure he had the help that he actually needed before any decisions are, are on me. I just wanted to be clarified that, you know, we-
It doesn't have to be written verbal is good, too.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, a lot of what I've heard tonight from the applicant and other people, things that they're upset about, I, I certainly understand. If they're accurate, why they're upset. But I think probably the forum for that is gonna be civil litigation, if it rises to that, and, and really has nothing to do with an appeal necessarily. But, but that's for them to determine later.
The, the next step from an appeal to the ZDA is to take it to court.
Right.
Okay.
No, yeah, I just think it-
Regardless of whether, you know, you agree or disagree, you know, we try to interpret what is given to us based on the information that's provided by the person requesting the appeal and, you know, just go, you know, from there. Doesn't mean that we're going to be right, doesn't mean that we're going to agree or disagree, it's just, you know, we have to make a judgment based on information that was provided.
I understand. No, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the question.
Now we're down to the finding of facts.
No, you better conclude, you better conclude your meeting.
This meeting has been ended? Can I say ended?
Public hearing?
Public hearing has ended.
Has ended.
Has closed. I'm not, I'm not very good at this part, you guys, I just go along with the flow. Now, we're going to reopen for finding of facts? Opinions, discussion? Opinions, discussion between us? What's? What do you think?
It's kind of messy.
Yeah.
I'll go first, I don't care. If we were to try to make a decision on this appeal tonight, I would have to say no, because I don't believe that he has been given us justification to vote in his favor. Personally, I would like to see that the applicant withdraw his appeal and resubmit it after getting more information, more accurate information, the butter having her property surveyed, you know, that may be a month from now, who knows? I, you know, I don't know. But, you know, I think that the applicant needs to withdraw his appeal and resubmit.
If I may, I'm not sure, according to your zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance clearly says you can, you have to appeal within thirty days of the permit.
Right.
So anytime-
See, the four-
The permit was issued on June 3rd.
I guess that's not really a good option.
It's either, at this point, it's either for or against your table, those are your three options.
And at this point, we really don't have any evidence that supports an appeal or supports any reason why Mr. DeMers has, I think, addressed each concern that was brought up.
Yes, and he has the, and he has the survey. I mean, it's not like we're working blindsided, he has a survey on that property, and he's had, you know, state come down as well as themselves. Brandy?
I'm kind of again, like, this doesn't hold any merit for me.
Well, somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we deny this appeal.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Brandon?
Sorry.
Motion has been made to deny and is consecrated by Brandy. All those in favor? All those opposed? This is the conclusion of tonight's meeting.
We're going to list out the findings of facts for the, notice that he'll sign?
Yes.
What's that do for the building?
Sorry?
What's that do? He just builds his house and he's all set up?
As far as your appeal goes, sir, your appeal has been concluded. Your next step is to take it to court.
Anyone want to go to court? I'm paying.
Please excuse us, but we are still in the middle of a meeting, so-
Meet me outside and I'll take your names and I'll pay.
Finding of facts. Where are we going? You're better than this, Ryan.
Let's see, whereas we don't actually have, um-
We have no facts.
We have no facts. We don't have an actual complaint, we have- We're not laughing.
Excuse me. Have a good day, thank you.
Who was laughing?
So according to this paper, we have to know what finding of the facts were?
So you're listing out, you have to list out reasons why you decided why you denied the permit. The applicant asked you to overturn the building permit. Why didn't you overturn it? Because the C E O provided what to you and walked through the steps of why you decided the way you did.
He couldn't prove that anything was, I don't know the proper wording, I'm sorry.
Couldn't prove his case?
Yeah.
No, you can't, you can't simply state that the applicant failed to prove his case.
The C E O provided-
Now, we have to talk about, now, he specifically addressed the ten-foot right-of-way. Well, the ten-foot right-of-way is, was found to be, is somebody writing it down?
Yeah, okay, it's on the neighbor's property.
The ten-foot right-of-way was found to not be on Mr. Farley's property. The twenty-four-inch culvert, which was installed, I believe, under Stewart Drive?
I don't, I think-
That's what it shows on your, the highlighted-
I think because of blowback last year, I think they modified that and just did everything on Farley's property, so what-
No, what I'm saying is, it starts on the other side of the street, correct?
Starts on Mr. Farley's property.
There's a culvert, there's a culvert there, but new one's on Farley's property.
Oh, so there's two?
Yes, they never, they never completed the task because there was issues with Mr. Coulson not allowing to go on. So the culvert, the new culverts hasn't been installed under the road?
Okay, so the old culvert-
The old metal culvert's still there.
Is still there, and it is on, one end of it is on Mr. Coulson's property.
Coulson's property, yeah.
And the other end is on Mr. Farley's property.
Correct, yes.
And the culvert, the twenty-four-inch culvert was installed on Mr. Farley's property, extends from the old culvert-
Extends from the edge of the road onto his, to his property to bypass the water coming off from under the road to the other side of his house, or whatever it is, to the proposed thing for the D E P, the-
Entirely on-
Mr. Farley's property.
So the twenty-four-inch culvert on Mr. Farley's property was found to be in working order?
Yep.
Setbacks were met?
And entirely on Mr. Farley's property.
According to the survey?
According to the survey.
Setbacks were met according to the zoning board?
According to what he had on the survey.
This, this, the silt line, the issues with the silt line, I didn't, I didn't fully understand the issue, but-
He wanted to know if he was doing the wrong with the silt line, is the silt line where you're out on the ocean, you're out on the, out on water? He wanted to know if he was erupting that and wasn't, he was going low with that, and he kept pushing that, he thought he was going beyond, it's called the silt line. It's almost like when you go out and play in the water, you're sticking this silky stuff, it's kind of like-
Mike?
Well, the, the silk, the silk fencing that's out there also?
There's a silk fencing that's on his property is, I don't know how many feet wide. Was the neighbor to put it up or-
On Stewart Drive, the survey illustrates it's thirty-five feet wide.
Okay. The entrance is within that thirty-five feet, correct?
Yeah, there'll be a driveway entrance there.
And that's where the thirty-five loads of gravel and fill were, that were brought in, so that the trucks could get back, back in, is that where that stuff was put?
To, on inspection of this property, none of the neighboring properties has been-
No, that's not what I'm asking. Mr. Coulson had stated that Mr. Farley had trucked in a whole bunch of fill, whether it be gravel, sand, whatever, so that the trucks wouldn't get stuck going into his property. Did he not say that?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure he did.
Yeah, he said it's like-
And then he wanted to know if that was all going to be removed.
And what Mr. Coulson was asking was, is he going to remove all that, take it back down to the original grade?
He will remove it, he will build a septic system that is designed and meets dimensional setbacks, so whatever the final grade is there, it is.
So proper grade will be-
The permit establish says that it will be, will, it will, on the permit, you see one of the things for inspection, it does say that it will meet, it'll come back to its original. One of the stipulations-
Well, that will be one of the findings of fact.
Yes, that, that's in-
One of his concern, it was one of his major's concerns.
Right, but there's a, there's a, there's a building sector alarming out, they're not going to, they're going to do that.
We should totally understand that, yes.
Right.
Totally understand.
So then, one of his issues being that it's encroaching on his property, which was addressed, that it is not encroaching on Mr. Coulson's property.
And he was more worried about the water-
That would be one of our-
Going down, and it's being diverted, it is not going-
Stormwater is-
Going that way, but it's being diverted.
Mitigation is in place and is working according to standards.
What else was there?
Jiggle a few, it's not immediate. And it's particularly in the west, because some of it was on here, wasn't it?
So we don't know if this property was ever deemed wetlands or not?
It is not.
It is not, okay. That was something else that he had said, that we couldn't prove that it was ever labeled wetlands.
Right, it doesn't, and it doesn't meet the definition of a stream?
No, it doesn't meet the definition of a stream.
We learned that in the last time, what's that? It's a, is another word for-
Howard mineral bottom?
No. Is it, yes?
If you remember, if you remember a previous-
Mediterranean, yeah, 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 yeah.
Definition of stream is a free, free-flowing body of water from the outlet of a great pond or the confluence of two perennial streams as depicted by a blue line on the most recent edition of the United States Geological Survey. A seven-point-five-minute series topographic map to the point where the body of water becomes a river or flows to another water body or wetland. So having-
No, it's not, it's a culvert, and it has river rapids at the end of it, it's got a catch train, if you will.
Were there, were there-
Built to contain-
Silt and sand.
Silt and sand that washes down through the culvert. The culvert, you know, is functioning as designed and as it's supposed to be, and-
Were there, were there any other issues that were raised that we didn't address in our findings of fact?
Got the, the right-of-way, the twenty-four-inch culvert, the setbacks, the proper grade, it'll be brought back up, no encroachment, the mitigation was in place, it wasn't deemed a wetland, it's not definition of stream, so if you hit, that's nine finding of facts.
Okay.
Because I wanted, yeah, because I wanted to know if the wetlands dropped, it's done at the shore.
So I think we concluded with finding of facts.
Is everybody happy with that?
Yeah, I can't think of anything else.
Are you, are you going to do the finding of fact thing again?
Yes.
Okay, so then would it make sense then to come to our next meeting and vote on the findings of fact, based on-
You do your next one because it'll be on your agenda.
Okay.
But, and help me out here, before I open the book, there is a timeframe, I believe, that the finding of facts has to be within some time.
I don't have another copy.
I don't know what it is, but yes, there is. You have a question?
Yes, this is, just something that happened to me, I'm at 57 Stewart Drive, this guy was, maybe it was a break-
No, it's on.
Something like that, so it fell onto his land.
This is all I have.
I was at a fellow lot at 57 Stewart Drive, and three years ago, when I approached the town, same situation, they would not allow me to do anything. It's just wet, it's wet in certain areas when it really rains hard, and all they wanted to do was bring in enough fill to raise it up so that it stayed on the ground properly, and they told me I couldn't do anything with it. So I'm just kind of curious why we're getting mixed signals, C E O.
Well, I can't, I can't speak for, you know, three years ago.
No, no, I understand, I'm not-
No, you know, I mean, that would be, that would be a question that I would definitely want to put forward to the C E O.
If you want to come into the codes office anytime, talk about your personal, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I was just curious, because, no.
I mean, you know, what's, what, it should never be what's good for him, you know, is not good for him.
Right.
As long as the situations are the same.
Yeah, so they, they're in very similar situations, I'll remind you, where we apply maybe four holes to-
Zoning ordinance?
Versus what he put down.
Is it twenty days, fifteen days?
Things that all they-
Did you find out how many days? Don't ask first.
This is how they happen to another, and it's not that much consistent.
Well, you know, all we can do is try to be as consistent, you know, speaking from my point of view as just a member of this board, okay? All I can do is try to be as consistent as possible with everybody.
I'm a relatively young man here, so I'm just learning this process as well, I tried to come here tonight.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, yeah. I was extremely glad to see as many people, any audiences there were. We tried very hard, I thought, to give Mr. Coulson every opportunity to, you know, prove his appeal, you know, to provide evidence to support his appeal. If you don't have evidence to support your appeal, then how can you possibly expect me to, you know, vote in favor of your appeal? I'm not saying, I'm not saying that anybody is right or wrong or whatever, but, you know, you got to show me.
Exactly, and at the risk, at the risk of me, you people looking more negative about me.
Don't.
Ron is, Ron is my brother-in-law.
He's not here, so let's-
He's not talking about him.
I just, I'm sure you're all aware of his, he's relentless, he will not stop.
And, you know, I applaud, I applaud him and his endeavor, if he does not feel that he has been, what word am I looking for?
Fairly treated?
Fairly treated by the, fairly treated by the zoning board, you know, by all means, you know, take it spirit of court, because that's the next step. We're not perfect.
Right.
We don't know everything. Like I said, you know, I've been on, I've been on Z V A in four years. I've been on the Martin Finance Committee for seven, eight years. I've lived in this house since nineteen sixty-six.
You didn't find it?
Yeah.
Oh, she did.
No, I said, I could know-
Lois, she's got it.
And I certainly, I don't, I'm not-
Of course she did, of course she did. I thought you did. What page is it on?
Okay, so on page eighty-three, it talks about the board of appeals.
I don't know why.
Essentially, you have to make a decision within twenty days, which you have done tonight. What we've done in past practices is that we will email around the minutes and findings of fact.
Sorry.
We will email around the finding of facts and minutes, and what you've done previously is you'll just, you can, in this meeting tonight, you can authorize this chair, if they're approved, just to sign the finding of facts. You don't have to, you don't have to go back-
We don't have to have another meeting.
No, you've made, right, they're just, they're going to be a clear-
I will make a motion to allow the chair to sign the finding of fact.
She's not here.
The vice chair.
The vice chair. We authorize the vice chair.
I heard a motion, one of the-
I'll second it.
Motion of the first and second, that the vice chair signs the meeting.
Chair, vice chair, whatever.
I want the chair.
The chair was not here.
What was the vote?
Okay, all of those in favor? All of those opposed?
And there are some minor changes to the zoning ordinance based on the last time meeting, so you have to get new books in the process of, um, working this out, and I appreciate the board looking at this, everything was known and found and have tried to come into order.
Right after you found, I was reading that one.
I have another motion. Make a motion, adjourn.
I heard, motion to examine, seconded, oh, those that watch it, those that don't?
Thank you, turn the camera on, please.